So that we can share it with others that were not able to attend this live session. Our agenda today will include a few stories from interesting local women, a Burke's Nature update from our president, Kim Murphy, and plenty of opportunity for discussion, breakout groups, and reflection. We'd like to keep this next hour a relaxed, engaging discussion about healing in nature and the state of the environment in Burke's. We expect you will learn something new and inspirational, and we certainly welcome your participation throughout. The Zoom session is being managed by Caitlin Tatharo, our communications specialist. So for anyone that is not familiar with the state of the environment, I want to take a minute to explain what that is. About 12 years ago, Burke's Nature published a first-of-its-kind report for our community. It was called "The State of the Environment in Burke's." This report contained concrete, measurable data that have inspired people in our community to make lifestyle choices that help improve our impact on the environment. Our initial report looked at 25 different indicators in the areas of air, energy, land, waste, and water. Each indicator in the report received a thumbs up, thumbs down, or a neutral thumb, depending on the data we collected for that particular indicator. Really, we just wanted the community to get a sense of how we are doing in Burke's County in those areas. The report also provided ideas and actions that our community could use to help improve the indicators. So, for example, we looked at miles of impaired streams in Burke's County. We reported on air quality and our recycling rate in Burke's County. We looked at the amount of forest cover in Burke's and much, much more. We provide updates to these indicators every five years, and we have produced a state-of-the-environment publication each year. This impressive collection of reports can be accessed for free at burkesnature.org. And I really do encourage you to look through them and read some of the interesting data collected over this 12-year period. Again, the entire program, the State of the Environment program, is intended to help Burke's County residents, institutions, and businesses learn how they can change behavior to improve the environment. We typically host a 300-person breakfast in each November, but that couldn't happen this year for obvious reasons. So we're happy to be with you today virtually. We'd also like to recognize and thank our State of the Environment sponsors that make this program happen each year, particularly our major sponsor of UGI Utilities. Thank you, everyone, for your ongoing support. So, we're here today talking about healing in nature. Throughout this challenging year, our team at Burke's Nature listened to many different stories of how our members and friends turn to nature for mental and physical health benefits. These stories reinforced something we all know: nature is good for you. In fact, people can benefit from spending 120 minutes outside each week. Even the busiest people on the planet can afford two hours of time each week for their own mental and physical health benefit. To support this action of getting outdoors for two hours each week, we created burkesnaturerx.com to help make it easy for everyone to spend time outdoors. The Healing in Nature theme continued. Nine members of our community agreed to share their personal stories in our Healing in Nature feature this year. Today, you will hear from a few of them. First is Jane DeGrucci. Jane is an amazing artist that has turned to nature over the years, and Jane is here with us today. So Jane, would you please share your story with us?
Sure. Okay, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, first of all, thank you for including me in this discussion and in the Healing in Nature publication. It was an honor to do that. It's a topic that's very important to me, and thank you for all you do at Burke's Nature. It's so valuable to the community as well. To me, getting outside is absolutely essential. I think Burke's RX is a great tool for people to get in the habit of doing, and I think once they do, they realize the benefits as well. If you haven't read about me in the Healing in Nature publication, I'm an artist. I've been painting primarily in watercolor for about 15 years, and most of my subjects are of the natural world. That's something that inspires me. And as this 2020 began, I was planning a solo exhibition to celebrate the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and that's when I first got in contact with Tammy and hoping to support Burke's Nature with some of the proceeds from that. But for obvious reasons, it didn't happen, and sort of the 50th anniversary of Earth Day sort of got overshadowed by everything that was going on. So hopefully, we can celebrate some time, you know, when things get back to whatever normal will be. So I'm actually in my studio now. It's sort of an office/studio, and I usually keep some paintings hanging, and then I have storage down below. But as you can see, birds are often a thing I like to paint as well. So, but thank you again for including me in this.
Absolutely. We appreciate your involvement. Was there any particular part of your life, Jane, that when you turned to nature, was it an occasion in your life, or was just a lifelong love?
Just a lifelong love. I mean, even as a kid, I was always outside, and I went to college to study biology, so I, you know, had also had an interest in it into college and beyond, so.
Great. Thank you. Next, Amaya Shaw. Is she with us today, Caitlin?
She's not. Something came up. She said she'll try and pop in if she's able to, but I don't see her right now.
Okay.
So if she, if I do see her come in, we can pop back to her at some point.
Great. Amaya is a senior at Wilson High School and really had some emotional story, which you can find in our publication, of how she turned to nature during the pandemic. And it was interesting hearing from the younger generation in that respect. So I encourage you to read Amaya's story in our publication. Next, we will hear from our president, Kimberly Murphy, with an update on all of Burke's Nature's good projects related to the state of the environment and our activities in 2020. Kim?
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. We really appreciate your time, and this is all sort of new to us, as it is, I would imagine, all of you. We just wanted to share with you some highlights of what Burke's Nature has been doing this year. It's been a little bit of an odd year for everyone, but surprisingly, we've been able to maintain some sense of normalcy in our activities, and I'll explain a little bit why. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, we believe that nature is essential to our quality of life, and we demonstrate that in a variety of ways, through land protection, the protection of our water resources, we have urban gardens, and we have trails and quite a variety of education programs that connect people to nature and help them learn a little bit more about their environment. Of course, who would have ever thought that we'd be hanging up signs about, you know, wearing masks? And we particularly love this little critter who has his own mask on, asking people to be safe, having to post all of our preserves and trails with "Stay Safe", "Social Distance", "How to Behave on the Land" as we confronted this pandemic, and also offering guidance for our parents of children who participate in our programs. But I would say that in March, we pivoted pretty quickly, watching the CDC guidance, and we get quite significant guidance out of the Center for Early Childhood and Development from the state of Pennsylvania. We have not, to date, found it necessary to lay off any of our staff, for which we are very proud. I think because of the diversity of our funding resources, we have a variety of grant activities going on that have different deliverables and different timelines. We have some endowed funds. We receive some PPP funding and outright contributions from people like those of you who are on this call, for which we're very grateful. We were able to protect 319 acres this year through conservation easement. So fortunately, land protection is a pretty long-term relationship-building, one-on-one kind of activity. So even through the pandemic, we were able to, many of these program projects were already underway, and we were able to bring them to a close through either virtual closings or just one-on-one sort of social distance activities and meetings with landowners. Most of our land protection this year was focused in sort of the Hamburg District Albany Township in northern Burke's County, but we also protected a special property in Robinson Township as well. We renamed one of our Lower Alsace preserves to Bob's Woods at the Earl Poole Sanctuary in memory of Robert C. Fleming. You see his sister up there on the left. His sister, Trinka, was very interested in providing a memorial gift to Burke's Nature, and in recognition of that, we wanted to show our appreciation by renaming the sanctuary. That gift will provide for trail and preserve management, as well as a fund that will allow us to kind of make up the difference in easement protection and land protection projects should we need it. So we're very grateful for her support, and I would encourage you to go out there and visit Bob's Woods. It is, it's been newly signed, newly re-landscaped, and the parking lot has been redone. It's really a beautiful, fairly easy preserve to navigate. We continue our work with our partners across the Delaware Basin to work on water quality for the entire Delaware River watershed, and most of our efforts revolve around agricultural best management practices, largely focused in the Maiden Creek watershed. And so these are activities like streambank fencing, manure storage facilities, barnyard gutters, so that you don't have, what you see up in the left-hand corner up there is a lot of barnyard waste running directly into our waterways. We planted over 1,000 trees in October, and probably almost that many in April as well. Those are our two tree planting months, and we were able to do so with quite a number of volunteers who are willing to mask up, come together, you can see, stay distant, and get all of these important native trees and shrubs in the ground. And this was just an example of some of the locations that we planted trees this year. We're also replacing and updating all of our signs on our preserves, as well as many of our greater rating trails that we own and manage. So we would encourage you, as you get out and look around on our various preserves, you'll see updated signage. Hopefully, it'll be a little easier for you to navigate those trails and preserves, and some of the historical and educational information will be available again as well. We do have 10 community gardens in the city of Reading, and normally, we open our gardens right around the time when the pandemic hit, usually mid-March is when people like to start to get their peas and other beans and things in the ground. And so we made the decision that it was important for people to have access to the gardens, and for a variety of reasons, not only in the city of Reading, to have access to some open space and dirt and soil and areas where they can work, but also to provide food for their families. And so we made the decision to go ahead and open our community gardens, stressing safety and social distancing in the gardens, and we really did not have any incidents this summer at all. Of course, we had to shut down our Burke's Nature preschool, so 24 kiddos left on Friday and did not understand why they couldn't return to see their friends on Monday. Our education staff pivoted very quickly and began to provide daily circle time videos for their families, as well as arts and crafts and stories for them to participate in. And then we provided a weekly Zoom call for the children. And I had one parent remark to me how appreciative they were that we did this because her daughter didn't think she had any friends anymore. You know, as adults, we kind of are affected by the pandemic, but we can kind of rationalize and understand why we can't go hug and see our friends. But if you're three, or you're four, or five, that's pretty difficult to understand. And so these weekly Zoom meetings for our preschoolers really became very important for them to reconnect with their friends and to stay connected with their teachers. And they are remarkably good on Zoom. I've been on some preschool Zoom meetings that were better than adult Zoom meetings, so you'd be surprised. We also launched an effort this summer with colleagues throughout Burke's County called Burke's Summer Camps Unite, because many of us were in the predicament of not being able to open our summer camps on time. We felt it was important to band together and provide virtual content for all of our constituents in the city of Reading and beyond to participate in. So, for example, we had Reading Recreation Commission and South Mountain YMCA and The United Way, and Oliver Boys and Girls Club, and many, many other nonprofits participate in this program. BCTV hung all of our virtual content on their website, and so families were able to access that, see videos anywhere from, you know, cooking to nature hikes to, you know, how to have good hygiene, all hung on the BCTV site, some in English and in Spanish. And then we were able to provide some activities to the families who were picking up meals with the Reading Recreation Commission and the Oliver Boys and Girls Club over the summer, which reached about 2,000 families. So at one point, they all got a bag with instructions on how to dissect an owl pellet and learn about what an owl eats and what the bones of various tiny little mammals might look like. We created, when it was evident that the schools were having a little bit of an unusual schedule this year due to the pandemic, we created a program at the end of August called Camp for School, where parents could sign their children up. They deliver their kids every day, some every day, some one or two days, some half-days. We help guide their virtual learning for them, and then we get the kids outside as much as possible when they're not in quote-unquote "school". So you can see the level of joy they're having in that canoe in our nature play area, and it keeps them off the screen as much as possible. And that's been a very popular program, and our plan is to continue to offer it. So if anybody needs that service, I would encourage you to go to our website and sign up. The Nature Place, our nature center, we are, you're going to hear it here first. We won't talk much about this until 2021, but since you're joining us today, we are embarking on a construction project to add a second floor to our preschool. So this is a rendering of what that might look like. It will give us an outdoor area, covered area, as well as an additional classroom, and we're hoping to be able to open that up this time next year. It's always been an issue for us when hosting field trips of maybe 200 or 300 students to make sure that we have a space that is covered and large enough to be able to accommodate all of them. So we are really excited about this project, and we're very grateful to an anonymous donor who is funding that for us. We started a scavenger hunt, a countywide wild goose chase. So you see Globi there with his phone and app. If you download the app Goose Chase, you can search for Burke's Nature, and there are a variety of different scavenger, virtual scavenger hunts that will take you throughout the county or throughout our preserves to get you outside and get you competing for prizes. Next year, our plan is to have our State of the Environment program again. Hopefully, we will be able to meet in person. So mark your calendars for November 4th in 2021, and we hope to see all of you there. And now, I would like to introduce Tiana Lopez to share her story. We met Tiana last year and were very impressed with her. She has really unique experiences, contributes greatly to the life of the city of Reading. She is often known as Creative Tiana. And Tiana, I will let you join us to tell your story.
Hello. Can you hear me? Awesome. Good. So yes, I am Tiana Lopez, also known as Creative Tiana, and that's just my username or handle across social media. And in my generation, social media is very, very important. And my main work that I do is I am an urban farmer, so I advocate for urban farming, urban gardening, anything that will get people, specifically, especially people of color, any type of minority group, out into nature. And recently, I just got a new job, so now I'm officially a cultivation associate, so I grow plants full-time now. So, yes, so that is my passion. That's what I, essentially I live for, and hopefully, that'll be what I continue to do in the future. For my story, I believe, I remember I shared about going through my trials in college, which is funny because I'm wearing the shirt, and that was not on purpose. But yeah, during college, I was having such a rough time. I was in the education track, and, you know, I really wanted to be a teacher, and I just was struggling with some of the things that I was learning about, you know, the educational system and just the trials of college itself and other just personal things. And I really turned to nature during that time, to whether it was spaces or activities in nature or crafts in nature. You know, I did a lot of crystal wrapping, and I did a lot of foraging for wild materials for wild crafting and stuff. And it was very therapeutic for me and very healing for me, and I continue to advocate that and bring that forward. So yeah, that's my story.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. And can you think of like, do you have a favorite place in nature? I mean, obviously, you love the garden, but is there any particular spot that brings you, you know, real solace?
I think right now, it's probably Ricketts Glen, which is kind of far from us. But every time I think of, we went there last October, I believe it was, every time I think of that place, it's just such a, it gives me like that magical feeling. It was just so many waterfalls and so vast, and it was a true adventure. So I've been wanting to go back so badly this year, and I haven't had a chance yet.
Yeah, for those of you on the call who aren't familiar with Ricketts Glen, it's one of the Pennsylvania state parks. It is truly beautiful, has quite a number of gorgeous waterfalls, and would highly encourage your attendance if you can do that. Do you have sort of a story at all from your particular time in your childhood or favorite memory in nature that you might want to share?
When, that instantly thought about my Grammy, who was actually my great-great-grandma. And she was Pennsylvania Dutch, and she lived in Lancaster with the Amish, and she had an orchard at the back, and the neighbors had a big pond. And I think that's my favorite just time of my childhood, is because, and behind that was just nothing but corn. It was just a big cornfield. But her yard and the neighbors and just being outside all the time is probably my favorite memory. She also loved bird watching, so she had bird feeders everywhere in every tree. So I always think about her and her love for nature and how that kind of translated to me too, so.
That's great. Thank you for sharing that. And we are very proud to have Tiana doing some work for Burke's Nature this year as well. So that will be, we'll be able to share more about that in the future. So Caitlin, do you want to break us into some discussion rooms?
Yeah, definitely. Since it's not too big of a group, do you think we should just do two? Are you okay with that? Okay, so we'll just split it up into two groups and just take some time to talk about the stories that we heard and reflect on that, and just a discussion about, you know, ways that nature has helped us specifically. We've been talking about everything going on right now and this year. So just some time to share with everybody about how we're all kind of feeling, and then we'll regroup, and if we have some highlights from those discussions, we can, we can share those then. Just want to make sure we have someone from each. Okay. I'm going to send you to your rooms.
Does anyone want to start with your, either your favorite childhood memory, which is usually my favorite icebreaker, but childhood memory in nature, or what you specifically did this challenging year to spend a little bit more time outside?
Evening, everyone. I'll jump out and be first. I would say I'm not shy. David Hunter, I'm the executive director of the Burke's County Planning Commission. So pleased to be with you this evening, and certainly appreciate all the hard work that Tammy and Kim and all the staff at Burke's Nature do. So hello to the staff at Burke's Nature. And my two quick contributions to the narrative are, one, I grew up in Philly, in Mount Airy. If you're familiar with the city, it's a great part of town, and we're near Fairmount Park. And so Whistler Hitten Creek was my favorite stomping ground. Literally, the woods, one of the entrances to Carpenter's Woods was a block from my house. And so my father took us into the woods multiple times, numerous times. And I remember sledding in the woods in the winter, just great memories. One negative memory was I broke my wrist one winter. Yes, it's great, sledding down. Is this true? Dead man? it's great, sledding down. Is this true? Dead Man's Hill? But just love tromping through the woods. And as an adult, I went back to the Whistler Creek along Forbidden Drive, if you're familiar with that, and just discovered a whole slew of trails that I didn't know existed as a child. So here in Burke's County, I am elated to just seek out more trails. And I've been to trails that even some of my staff haven't trekked. So Never Sink Trail, and it's going up to Hamburg, and discovering the trail heads up there. The trails along 724 Union Township, there's trails, there's the Skookal Highlands Trail. Just love getting out and hiking. So yes, I appreciate the ideals of how we need to get out and get more, more vitamin D, right? Get more sun. And it is so therapeutic. So I'm sure most of us already know that, but just want to echo the sentiments of those that spoke. I love getting out on a nice day and going on a good hike.
Well, I'm glad your career landed you in Burke's County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to share? Nelson, have you?
I'll go, if you want.
Okay, sure.
I think my, my story sounds similar to David's in terms of, first of all, I'm Eric Jenkins. I'm on the board of Burke's Nature in addition to other things, but that's kind of why I'm here today. My story sounds similar to David's in that, you know, grew up as a kid with two brothers in Western Pennsylvania and...
Even if you're intimidated by how cold it might be, a week, I could have stayed there all night. It was one of these really special moments of being in the winter, experiencing that in a completely different way. So even without snow on the ground, I'm sure you could enjoy yourselves somewhere with a, with a fire. And that's my recommendation for some creative outdoor winter festivities.
That's a great recommendation, Reagan. And of course, at Burke's Nature, we say there is no such thing as bad weather, only bad clothing. So you just have to dress for the weather. I know, we have a fire pit. We've been having friends over for what we call driveway drinks, just one couple at a time around the fire pit outside. And it's really helped, I think, our sanity to, you know, have that human connection with others.
Can I just say, driveway drinks is such a great, like, idea. I'm writing this stuff down as we're going. You guys are giving great ideas here.
Well, and the funny thing was, we paved our driveway this year. It had been just sort of a rough, a rough paving. And I said to my husband, I feel like I put carpet in the living room or something, you know? Now we're doing all this entertaining, and we have this lovely McAdam driveway.
If you build it, they will come, Kim.
Anybody else want to share about their time in nature?
I guess I could add, one of the things I've kind of refound, I live in Phoenixville in Chester County, and I just recently moved, but during the pandemic, I was living in a little row home rental. And so it wasn't necessarily profound nature around me. But even just, as Tiana said, setting up like a bird feeder, and just, I found, I'm a birder by heart, so it wasn't like, oh, wow, suddenly I love birds. But even if I couldn't get out to a park or something, just kind of finding the little patch of nature in my backyard or seeing wildlife was really, like, kind of kept me grounded. Or when I needed a break from work, I'd just kind of go and sit with the bird feeder and like, take pictures or what have you. I'm not sure if anyone else has, is birds, or has been looking to birding during the pandemic, but that's been helpful for me.
I could just add to that. We used to always feed the birds up until, say, 10 years ago, when we started doing a lot of traveling during the winter. And you don't want to start feeding them and then have to stop in the middle of January or February. But this year, it's just we're going to be home anyway. We've, we've kind of come back four square times with bird feeding. We've got four or five bird feeders up and are just loving the heck out of seeing them all come back. They don't, doesn't take them long to find it.
No. Any, any special species visiting your feeders that you've seen?
I've still got my hummingbird feeders charged and fresh, waiting for a Rufus Hummingbird, probably in vain, but one always hopes. We're getting the use of the Downies and the Harries and the Red Belly Woodpeckers, and, you know, lots of Cardinals. But it'll take a while, I think, to get the really interesting stuff. Stuff to titmice, chickadees, plenty of those. But we're enjoying it. We have a jigsaw puzzle set right in front of our living room window with no screens on it, so we can look right out at the birds while we're working on whatever jigsaw puzzle du jour might be.
That's what I've got to do. I've got to push my desk in front of a large enough window and strategically place a bird feeder by that window.
Does anyone have a favorite memory of being in nature that they would be willing Well, I, I will share that I grew up on a cul-de-sac. And unlike many cul-de-sacs, ours had a grassy circle in the middle. So that was like the meeting place of the neighborhood kids. And we were on the cul-de-sac every day, every night, biking around the circle, biking up and down everybody's driveway. And, you know, I look back on that, and I think how fortunate I was to grow up in that kind of atmosphere where, you know, we were just, we were in charge of that street and playing games until the, you know, our moms called us to come in. And it was, it was really a great time. And I suspect many of you have a similar kind of childhood.
I was going to say, as a millennial, I think we're like the last group that had a childhood like that. And we see, have seen so much transition. So it's interesting to me that, like, that's how I grew up. And my cousin that's not much younger, like, has been indoors and stuff. So I'm thankful that I was with the, one of the last crews that got to grow up that way and be outside until dark.
You're saying you were the last tribe in the woods?
Something like that.
Well, is anyone on the call, like, with parents, sorry, with kids, did, did the pandemic and the kind of the need to play outside a bit more, did that change the patterns? Has anyone living in a neighborhood, did we notice maybe a return to what Kim and Caitlin described? More kids outside instead of inside together?
I know for myself, our neighbors have like five kids, I believe, five, and they're all under the age of like 14. And when we moved here last year, they were always, 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 always outside. And it actually turned to the opposite. And one day, I was out gardening, and the mom was outside, and she said, yeah, I just don't feel like I can let them out with everything going on. And, you know, it's funny, we were joking about how like last year, we were like, oh, they scream all the time. And this year, we're like, you know, I actually miss those screams. Like, it's kind of sad now. And...
Really? So my children used them last year in school. When we first went into shutdown, the teachers would have them do different missions to, you know, for math or whatever. We clearly use it for being outdoors, and we do outside challenges. So we will soon be releasing a goose chase scavenger hunt for Never Sink Mountain, David, and eventually for each of our nature preserves. We have one happening right now for our Nature RX program, and that one is huge. We have Penn State Health as a partner. So there must be 40 to 50 missions on there right now. And you can win some really cool prizes at the end of December in that game. But the missions are really what makes it fun. And it encourages people to maybe try a new trail you haven't been on yet, or go to a new place that you otherwise probably just wouldn't do. So for example, our missions can have you doing some kind of exercise outside, or it can take you on the closest trail, or you must take a photo, snap a photo of a creek that's near your home, and you upload that into the app, and that completes your mission. So there's just, it's a great tool that, even if you're involved with other organizations, or churches, or anything, I would recommend looking into the app as a tool to engage people right now. Because you don't have to gather in groups. It's something people can do on their own time. And you can make it fun and provide incentives to get people out there. So I know some businesses have used it as a team building thing for their staff. Again, we use it just to engage the public, and we'll give away some great prizes. But I just wanted to plug that because it's a great way to get outside and log your 120 minutes each week doing scavenger hunts.
Sounds like fun.
It is. It is. We have about 30 seconds left in this room. And again, this was just intended to learn a little bit more about each other and share some stories. But is there anyone else that wanted to say anything before we, Caitlin kicks us out of here? Okay, well, thank you for participating. And we'll automatically jump back into the main room shortly, and Kim will wrap up the session. Thanks.
Apologies if I cut anybody off, sorry.
How dare Caitlin, how dare.
So we, the magic of technology, we can time travel into little breakout rooms. I know we had some great discussion in ours, and I hope the other breakout room did as well. I'd like to just open it up. If anybody has any reflections that they might want to share, or any questions about Burke's Nature or our work, please feel free to raise your hand and ask them now. I'm sort of scrolling through everybody's little picture to see if anybody's raising their hand or has a question or a comment. Well, I am not seeing...
David Hunter?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, just want to thank you for all that you do and your staff at Burke's Nature. Kim and I spoke briefly today, and we look forward to partnering. That's we, the Burke's County Planning Commission, I look forward to partnering with Kim in the future regarding education. I mean, I don't know how to say it, but I love a good hike. Sherida and I grew up, I'm falling in love with Never Sink Mountain Trail. So I get there as much as I can, and I visited other trails near me. So yeah, getting the word out that it's just good to get out and get some sun. I saw the news feed that one of the habits of geniuses, not claiming that for myself, but one of the habits of geniuses is that they take a walk every day. Fact-check me on that one, but I just was on my news feed and, and check it out. So if someone finds that, please share with the group. But it's just good to get out and explore nature. So thank you, Kim, for all that you do at Burke's Nature.
Thank you, David. And we certainly appreciate your staff as well. Great partnerships there.
David, if I may make a recommendation, the Burke's Nature staff took a frigid hike on Never Sink Mountain last year, maybe around this time, maybe in December. But it was after maybe a rainstorm, and because it'd been so cold, all the trees were like ice sculptures. It was the most beautiful thing. So if you can keep an eye on the weather, if it works out, I highly recommend, if you already love Never Sink, try going after a frost or a little bit of rain. In the winter, it's, it's a spectacle.
Thank you for that. I'm already plotting on some snow, so. I moved from Virginia to Pennsylvania, and one of my stipulations was, God, you know, it's supposed to snow in Pennsylvania. So let's get some snow this winter, guys. And after the snow, I'm planning on going out, going up the mountain and catching the view. I look forward to that.
Awesome.
And I would say, if you're not on our mailing list already, to go ahead and sign up for that, we will continue to offer some limited outdoor programs, and those will likely be hikes as we explore some of our preserves. I know Michael likes to do a New Year's Day hike. And we will put up occasionally a story walk in Angelica Park. So if you have little people in your life, that's a nice opportunity for families to get out and literally read a book as they walk on a, on a trail throughout, throughout the park, so.
It's a great resource. David mentioned that he loves Never Sink, which is one of our preserves specifically. But we brought back GreaterReadingTrails.com. And if you click on All Trails, that has a list of, you know, the public areas and trails that we know of in Burke's County to just kind of jog your memory a little bit if there's places that you've forgotten about or want to explore new places. It includes not only our preserves, but like I said, other, other locations that are managed by other organizations in Burke's County. So definitely check that out.
So I want to thank all of the participants in our State of the Environment publication. You see all of their pictures here. We'll have tomorrow afternoon, we'll have additional stories that, if you want to join us for that, well, I'm sure it'll, it'll be a nice different conversation with different folks on the call. So you're welcome to register if you want to do this again. And I thank you all for supporting our organization, being members of our organization, playing a great role in the community as partners. And thank you for, for attending.